I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board to order. And I'm assuming that Jonathan is passing on the thing from the Affordable Housing Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The agenda has changed somewhat from what you've seen. LXMI Holdings have requested that we hold their public hearing over to the next meeting, which would be, I believe, November 20th. And Jeff Baker, the public hearing, there's a stop work order and there's also a notice of violation on that property. And under Section 125-11 of our town zoning law, planning board cannot process an application for a special use permit or site plan as long as that condition exists. So we will not be dealing with that either tonight. Other than that, I think it stands as written.
Yeah, the only addition to that, Michael, is with respect to the LXMI matter, while the public hearing will not be continued this evening, the board still has to take an action this evening to schedule the continuation for the next meeting.
To open and continue it, yes.
So technically, it's an agenda item for that limited purpose.
And we'll be doing that in about three minutes. Okay. I'd like to hear a motion to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Review and acceptance of the regular meeting notes of September 18th and the very brief meeting note of October 2nd and the summary of the work session held on October 2nd, 2017, in the matter of the solar power plant proposed by Hudson Solar. Have you had a chance to all review those? Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Under correspondence and announcements, I think we've all received some correspondence last day or so regarding, relative to the Hudson Solar proposal. I'm not going to read them at this point because I don't think there's anything to gain by doing that, given the nature of those correspondence. But other than that, I don't think I have any announcements or other things to mention to you. Does anyone else have anything they want to mention? Hearing, nothing. We will wait approximately one more minute. And we will then open a public hearing so we can continue it.
Bring a towel so you don't get them dirty.
The Act and I.
Oh, okay.
And I think November 20th is our next meeting. It's the third Monday in November, yes. We only have one meeting in November. Gesundheit.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first public hearing scheduled for tonight is LXMI Property Holdings LLC at 18 Hagerty Hill Road, special use permit and site plan approval. It's a continuation from July 17th, 2017, as deferred by the applicant's request of August 21st, 2017. We have recently received, in the last day or two, a request to once again defer the public hearing and continue it at our next meeting, November 20th, and I think it would be 6:35. So we are opening the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wished to, has any comments or anything to say about the LXMI application? You can certainly say so now. Okay, seeing none, could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to November 20th at 6:35?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Gretchen, I recuse.
And now as we wait another four minutes for the next public hearing, I don't think there's anything else we can do tonight. No?
No, there are no referrals this evening. You normally plug those in.
Okay. Absolutely.
What's become of the Nembers application?
It's still before the Zoning Board of Appeals. They have taken it up, the ZEO's order, stop work order, and the referral of that stop record order to all three properties, and they're now considering it. And I assume they should be coming back soon with a determination of the nature of the stop work order, what it was applied to, what it is applicable to, and the validity of it. But it is before the ZBA right now. It's like an eerie silence, isn't it? Just making corrections. Oh, please do. I don't suspect.
You see, there may still be a habit of disowning.
No, probably not.
Mike does not, and nobody does. Don't ask courses.
No, that's much better.
Another 90 years, no.
No, another 90 years, we're not going to be here. I'm sure that Jonathan will have completed the project before 90 years, so.
Changing the date in the resolution from 2107 to 2017.
Please do.
No, you can't do that.
Our next public hearing is Mench Grasmer LLC, 29 Mill Road and U.S. Route 9, subdivision plat approval. Conduct a public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval for consolidation of a 25.2 acre parcel, a 29.5 acre parcel, and a 448 acre parcel within the RD 10 district into a single 503 acre parcel, being integral part of a type 1 action, Grasmer Hotel, Farm Hotel Development, subject of prior EIS and statement of findings, SEER, and statement of consistency with coastal policies. Jonathan, when you're ready.
I think I'm ready. What we're asking for is really the consolidation of three different lots, all of which comprise the area for the Grasmer Hotel project that we've been talking to the board about for several years now. And it's really these three right here, which is about 30 acre parcel, a 25 acre parcel, which contains the old manor house and property, and this larger 400 acre parcel here. So the sum total between the three is about 503 acres. And we're just asking that these three be combined into one lot. The requirement under zoning is that the project have 250 acres. We'd like to reserve the right to subdivide it down to 250 acres at some point in the future, but for now, we're happy to just have the larger lot contain the full 503 acres.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Okay, hearing none. Since we already have a SEER approval, we don't, okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
And you have draft resolution on page 4?
I do.
With that one correction, for those who have the resolution in front of them, numbered paragraph number 1, the year 2107 becomes the year 2017.
Thank heaven. Okay. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application by Grasmer LLC for subdivision plat approval. One, reaffirms its acknowledgment of September 18th, 2017, that the proposed consolidation of parcels has been addressed by the planning board with input from both the town's CAB and its Waterfront Advisory Committee during the planning board's review under both SEER and the town's LWRP of the Grasmer Hotel, Grasmer Farm Hotel Development, a country end 2, subject of EIS, subsequent statements of findings under SEER, and statement of consistency with coastal policies. Two, approves the application with the chair authorized to stamp and sign the subdivision plat for the minor subdivision consolidation of parcels in their entirety upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements of the 180 calendar days of adoption of this resolution. A, stamping of the subdivision plat is a non-jurisdictional subdivision for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. B, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 101, Section 101-4.4, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, including all required stamps, seals, and certifications. C, payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinbeck related to the review and processing of this application. Three, in taking this action, the planning board knows that there are no new lots or additional housing sites created through this consolidation of parcels. Accordingly, neither the provision of Town Code addressing the set aside of recreational or other open space land nor the provision addressing the development of affordable housing is deemed applicable to approval of this subdivision application. Four, further, in taking this action, the planning board acknowledges the applicant may, in the future, subdivide the combined 503 acre parcel, provided that a parcel of a minimum 250 acres in a configuration found satisfactory to the planning board is maintained for country end 2. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You're good to go.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
And we're within one minute of our next event. Okay. Our next public hearing is Shared Erasator, 17 Duchess Terrace, site plan approval. Conduct a public hearing on application for site plan approval for proposed porch repair, sills, and replacement of windows and other window replacements on her circa 1850 dwelling within the Reincliffe Overlay District, being classified as a type 2 action under SEER. Take it away.
He just said it. That's exactly what I'm trying to do, replace and repair windows, replace the port, repair the porch, so I can replace the windows.
Okay. Let's see here. At this point, I guess Edna and Sharon did the site visit?
Oh, Eric.
Oh, Eric, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I should take my glasses off.
We're off.
Oh, wait a minute, no.
I'm usually confused.
It's not my glasses, it was.
That's all right.
2107.
Yeah.
Okay. Eric and Sharon.
That's the date we did it.
Yeah. You look very good for that age. If you two'd like to give your comments on what you saw.
It's a very straightforward project. Windows have been replaced in the house of the type that are going to be replaced again. They're not going to be exactly the same because I think the brands are different, but other than that, the style's going to be the same. Everything's been approved for the other ones. These are exactly the same, so to speak, and I don't see any problem at all with this.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, anything you want to add?
I'd just say, it's just a very simple replacement of the windows.
Okay.
I'd also like to say that we should have some sort of subcategory that doesn't have to go through the whole process for some small items like this, just to put that on the record.
No, I think that's a good point.
We were putting together a list earlier today.
Very good.
Beginning with the lot consolidation issue, as a first.
Yeah, that, we did discuss that at the site visit.
Yep.
Sheed a lot for replacing windows.
I got some numbers, right.
Yeah, I mean, your paperwork is that thick.
Anything from the CAB on this one?
Good evening, Robert Donaldson, Constipation Advisory Board. I joined Eric and Sharon on that site visit and made a review on the application. And during the site visit, we found that the removal and installation of the new windows will not violate any of the policies found in the town's LWRP.
Ooh, we got both CAB and WAC at once. Thank you.
Just a silly question. How could they possibly violate the law? I'm just, I'm asking a question because it seems, it seems to be not a great use of her time.
Yeah. What if she decided to install psychedelic windows with strobe lights coming out as part of the aesthetic beauty that she believes, and that would affect the view shed from the Hudson River, her neighbors would be up in harms?
You were considering an option here.
No, I'm not using it.
All right, thank you.
That was not presented earlier, so I don't think that was one of the options. Any members of the public have anything they wish to say? Okay, it's a type 2 action under SEER, so we do not have a SEER determination to make. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very, thank you.
Mike, is it okay if I say something?
Absolutely.
Further to what Eric said, I brought you some numbers. Okay. I've got a copy for everybody here and for you. This has cost, so far, my outlay has been $1,307. The cost of the windows is less than $5,000 installed. It's taken three months. I would totally recommend, I'm a process engineer and was for IBM for 35 years, I would recommend rules about what makes this a minor problem versus a major problem, and give people the list of what they have to do up at the beginning. Because we seem to discover things on the way. And incidentally, everybody was fabulous. Everybody was helpful, everybody was great. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't like this was a difficult process, but it just, if I'd have known it was going to take three and a half months, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't let the contractor go booking something else now. So now I can't get some of these windows done now because the contractor is off doing something else.
Another job, yeah.
How many windows?
Nine.
And in all fairness, I asked the question earlier because we have a building department, and by New York State law, they must install windows that meet certain energy requirements. You know, I get the whole point about the psychedelic windows, but, you know, it should be much simpler.
I was just, the only reason I brought the numbers for you was that when you start to think about what has to be a full public hearing, I mean, $326 to do the mailing.
Yep.
No.
You said why? What's the point?
Make sure that you give that copy of those documents to the chairman so that he can pass that on to the people who make the laws.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you for taking your time to.
I just, it was just, I mean, everybody's been great. Everybody was fabulous. The people who did the site visit, Gretchen was fabulous. Mike's been really wonderful to help me through this whole process, but it just seemed like it was such an overkill to do what I was trying to do.
It is an overkill, and it is something that needs to be addressed, and it's something that I think we can very easily remedy. It does not need to be this way.
Michael.
And thank you for doing this. This will help us make the argument.
It's going to be very helpful. There is, and this is following the discussion, I'm just interjecting a little bit about the discussion earlier today. There is in the zoning law an expedited review procedure for ag buildings, as a, for instance. Come once to the planning board, planning board now has said the proposal is fine, no public hearing required, et cetera. There needs to be the same kind of consideration given to the property owner, the residential property owner, who is carrying out this, a small number of improvements, such as this particular application. And as Michael indicated, it would be a very simple fix in the zoning law. And instead of all the rest, this would have been a one-stop, one-step sketch plan review by the planning board.
But why do we need to be involved at all? Why does there need to be a site plan?
Because otherwise, you would have to completely undo the, you know, you wouldn't have to have a site plan, but you have to, you have to respect the Reincliffe Overlay section of the zoning law. That's the key. But it could be, this expedited procedure would work very nicely.
We've already tried to exempt repair and maintenance, and I think this, in many ways, goes to repair and maintenance, since it's basically dealing with windows that needed to be replaced. It's doing it with, obviously, upgrading, because the building code requires them be upgraded to a certain standard that wasn't, you know, available in 1850, to my knowledge.
So why isn't this repair and maintenance?
I'm sorry?
Why is this?
Because that's not the way the law is written right now.
We need to, we need to go back and look at the basic law, and if they're not changing shapes, sizes, and shapes, and they're putting in approved New York State windows, it shouldn't come in front of us. It's a simple building permit where they go out and make sure that they're putting in good windows, and it's done.
That's why the law has to be changed.
That's why the law has to be changed.
As long as the law requires us to do it.
So it doesn't have anything to do with it. It never comes here. It shouldn't come before us. It's ridiculous.
If the law is so rewritten.
Right.
Okay.
The problem is, right now, right now, the building inspector is constrained from issuing a permit.
And we're constrained by the law that we have to administer. We can't change it, we can't interpret it, we can't modify it.
Right.
But the town board can, and we have to recommend to them they do, and what you've provided us with will be very helpful in making that argument. And thank you.
Another area that came up, and I know you've got to move forward in this resolution, but another area that came up was the discussion of what about, what about a situation where a residential improvement, an access ramp, or an emergency or a generator needs to be installed because of the medical circumstances of the owner of the building or the occupant of the building? Should there not be an exception to allow that to occur expeditiously, rather than being part of a two- or three-month-long process?
It should.
You know, they're just, just a couple of examples.
We're making a list. Okay, I have a resolution here. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the application by Shared Erasator for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-69, in the matter of proposed porch repair, sills and replacement, windows and other window replacements in her circa 1850 dwelling, 17 Duchess Terrace. One, reaffirms its prior classification under SEER of the proposed action as a type 2 action for which further environmental review is precluded. Two, determines the proposed work not to be inconsistent with any coastal policy set forth in the town's LWRP. Three, in consideration of the limited extent of the exterior modifications, waives the submission of any additional information that might be construed to be required upon strict application of the site plan submission requirements, as set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-75. Four, approves the application and authorizes the chair to note the planning board's approval of the replacement windows on a copy of the submitted catalog cuts and to transmit a copy of the approved catalog cuts, so noted, to the applicant, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector. Five, prior to acting, as authorized above, the chair shall confirm that there are no outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts through Town of Reinbeck related to the review and processing of this application. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
I will poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And as luck would have it, we can go right to our next, all right. This is Gibraltar Management, 7047, New York State Route 9 North, Certificate of Removal or Demolition. Conduct a public hearing on reapplication for certificate of removal or demolition under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-62, in the matter of the proposed demolition in full of two historic barns on a parcel, tax map number given, within the rural countryside, RC 5 district, being classified as an unlisted action under SEER for which a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance under SEER was previously issued by the planning board. Take it away.
As you stated, we're looking for approval for removal of the lone barns, which was previously granted. We had a couple of items we had to do in order to fulfill the board's needs, which were remove some agricultural graffiti planks, which was done, and so now we're seeking to have approval for the demolition of the two barns.
Okay. Any questions by members of the board? Any comments from the public? Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a draft resolution. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the reapplication by Gibraltar Management for certificate of removal or demolition under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-62. One, approves the reapplication for certificate of removal or demolition and authorizes the planning board chair to so notify the zoning enforcement officer upon the applicant's payment of outstanding fees and/or required escrow amounts due to Town of Reinbeck in the matter of the acceptance, review, and processing of this application. Two, further authorizes the zoning enforcement officer, being the agent of jurisdiction in the case of a historic building, to issue the related demolition permit upon receipt of the aforementioned written notification from the planning board chair and the applicant's compliance, of the applicant's compliance with any other pertinent laws, codes, rules, or regulations within the purview of either the ZEO or the building inspector. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, we have one public hearing left this evening. Hudson Solar, 355 Wertenberg Road, continuation from August 21st and September 18th of 2017, a combined public hearing on applications for special use permits for solar power plant in major excavation and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed ground-mounted solar power plant on a leased portion of a parcel owned by Barry Sherad and located within the rural countryside RC 5 district and agricultural 20 districts adjacent to natural registered property, being classified as a type 1 action under SEER for which, after distribution of a SEER notice of intent to serve as lead agency, the planning board assumes lead agency status. And Sharon, Sherard has recused herself.
My name is Nate Setmire. I'm engineering manager at Hudson Solar. First and foremost, I would like to, in relation to the email that I'd sent to everyone in the planning board today, we realized, in accordance with the noise issue that was brought up in the past, we were only really considering ground-mounted solar arrays, and we were trying to think of situations that we could give as an example to the town planning board. And we were thinking, we found a scenario that I think represents what I think was, will give a good idea of what, what type of noise the system will produce. At Reinbeck Equine, we actually have a commercial rooftop system with seven similar inverters with DC optimizers, solar edge inverters, all have fans, all similar architecture to the ones that would be at the, at the Wertenberg Road residence. And we're thinking that, we were there on Saturday at 1:30, which is a good time because it gives us enough time for the sun to kind of come down, beat on the south-facing wall. In this instance, they were placing the south-facing wall because that was, that was really the only spot that the equine would, would allow it, and it was, it was best to be put there, near the interconnection. But what it does is it allows the inverters to heat up a little bit more, so we tend not to do that. And the Wertenberg Road installation, we're proposing to have them on the north side of a rack so they're out of the sun, and the fans don't need to be used as much. But this installation gives a great, I guess, example of fans coming on and allowing you guys to really see what, what type of impact that has in terms of the noise. There's actually one more inverter than would be proposed at the Wertenberg Road residence, but I think if we were to go there, like I said in the email, on this Wednesday at 1:30, it would allow us to be there on a nice clear day where you, where the sun is out, and it's, it's not going to get much hotter than it is right now because we're getting towards the end of the year here. But it would allow the inverters to heat up, that wall that they're on to heat up. And when we were there on Saturday at 1:30, the fans were all running on all the inverters. So I think it'd be a good idea to have the planning board come out on Wednesday at 1:30, see what the inverters are like in person, right there next to them, and then maybe even walk 160 feet away, which is the closest parcel to where we're proposing to put them at Wertenberg Road, and see the noise impact of the fans there as well.
Okay. Members of the planning board, what do you think?
Well, we can only send a certain number.
Right.
Send a certain number.
Can only send three.
Three at the most.
Three maximum.
Yep. And we've talked to the equine because it's obviously a horse equine.
Right.
It's a sensitive situation, so we've prepped them on the, on the prospect of people coming out, but obviously, we don't want to bring too many people on their part as well, just to keep, keep their business.
I have referred the noise issue to Ray Jerkowski, our engineer.
Yep.
Review any documentation you wish to send him to look into means of trying to assess
Sent out the invitation to him as well, too. Yes.
It might be something we could ask him if he would also like to attend. I don't know what his schedule is or whatever. But are there members of the planning board who would like to do this?
Can I like to do...
Edna?
Couldn't, couldn't this be stacked if more than three people wanted to go?
Yeah. No, I think it's...
I imagine we could.
Unless, unless everybody doesn't want to, I should...
Who would like to be in the first wave? Edna?
Woody, can you do like 1:30, too?
Yeah.
We, I'd have to go and, and talk to the, to the equine just to, just to make sure they're, they're okay with the schedule and they're okay with the quantity of people. But we've already run it by them, and like I said, we were there Saturday, so they, they understand what we're proposing to do.
Well, so we know that we have three for the 1:30. Edna wants to go. Who else?
Richard wanted to go.
Richard?
But I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Given the lateness of the season and the low, the lower angle of the sun, what is the likelihood of getting all of the fans to be triggered at...
Oh, ve- very likely. Like I said, we were there Saturday, and at 1:30, they were all on. Because, because it's on the south wall, it's, it's, the south wall will heat up a good amount, and, and that heat will end up giving the inverters a little extra heat as well. And all the fans were on when we were there at 1:30, and from the latest weather that I had kind of checked, the Wednesday looks to be pretty clear and looks to be seasonably warm, unseasonably warm, actually, in terms of what it should be at this time of the year, and it's just going to get cooler from now, so I think it's a good opportunity.
Okay. So who would like to join Richard and Edna for the first wave?
I'd like to go, but 1:30 is tight for me, so if there's a later one, I would do that.
I have a few conflicts on Wednesday, so I don't know that I could make it.
I could possibly go on Wednesday. I have to check my schedule.
Okay, if you three could, you know, certainly Edna and Richard and Eric. Does anyone know who has our DB meter that we supposedly have somewhere?
That's, that's going to be my comment, if I might.
Yeah.
Comment to the planning board, it's interesting suggestion that you're making. I would advise the planning board, however, to recognize that we all have different levels of hearing. As I look around the table, many of you are basically at my age.
Would you care to elaborate on that?
Consequently, you know, and, and we're all, we all have subjective judgments, if you will, about the noise that we may hear. Therefore, I think it's absolutely essential that there be technical documentation of any noise that is experienced there, noise meter, calibrated noise, noise meter readings, et cetera. What you think you may hear is not good, is not good enough in a case like this. And I do know that while I was not at the meeting, I know you asked the applicant among the items, among the ten or twelve items that you listed as prerequisites to moving forward on even the completion of an EAF Part II, the actual conduct of a soi, a sound-noise study. This is not the conduct of a sound-noise study. This might be interesting observation.
Very good. I haven't heard back from Ray Jerkowski about his, he's reviewed, I think, the information that you've sent him. But I have not heard back from any comments he has, any suggestions he has about how a noise study might be done. I do think having a DB meter there with someone who knows how to use it, which is probably the big issue here, would probably be a good idea.
And calibrated.
And calibrated properly.
Yeah, I agree.
We, I know we had one, but I, I think the last thing I heard, the Village Police have it. But, so I'm not even sure where it is. What I'll do is I will contact Ray Jerkowski at Morris Engineering and ask him what he would suggest, how he would go about trying to assess what we might be hearing on Wednesday. If he could possibly attend, that might even be helpful. I assume that he's, has the technical skill to know how to calibrate and how to operate a, a meter of that sort.
Yep.
And that would probably be very helpful to have.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Someone who's worked around these for a long time, I think, even, even people who are slight in hearing when you get 160 feet and past 160 feet, it's...
I, I've faced this issue previously in representing projects over the years on several occasions, and it always has been the need for that, that documentation.
Understood.
And the need for the, the services of a sound engineer, a forensic engineer, someone, someone of that sort.
I agree.
And again, that's an applicant responsibility.
I understand.
The other problem that I perceive with your invitation is that when you invite us, that would be a certain number of us, you've also got the CAB to be concerned about it, and you've also got the general public. And with the type of business that Dr. Moore is running up there, you don't need a mob scene up there. So I would be very, I would be very suspect on opening it up to a larger group of people than two or three.
I completely agree. I think if, if we were to do it to multiple people, we would first have to get their okay, obviously, just because we want, we want to be sensitive to, to the business that they run there and also make sure that everyone gets a chance to, to hear that.
And I think a certified person is the right person to measure the noise level, not we amateurs.
I agree.
I'm not qualified to pass judgment on what is and what is not.
I agree.
Nor are we qualified to calibrate the instrument in the first place. So we wouldn't even know if the instrument's giving us accurate readings.
I agree.
So... Okay. Any other questions from members of the planning board at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
At the same time, we're interested, and we're just going there just for observation purposes. I get it, and I completely agree with that. But shouldn't we take someone from the public with us who can act as a, invite them along to say you can listen to the thing?
I would, going to suggest that if there's someone amongst the neighbors' group who would be willing to join this group and listen.
Again, that is subject to...
With the approval by the equine.
The approval by the applicant.
Right.
Well, I think we should leave it open at least and say one extra person so that they can go back and report what they heard.
Right.
Again, not as an authority, but as an observer.
Well, just have some sense of exactly what's being potentially proposed.
Understood.
And I think that's a very good idea.
It's, it's interesting because the applicant has said that the sound is a muffin fan, and there's been one running on the stage here all the time, and you can't even hear it.
Yeah, as I said, I've, I've worked with this type of equipment for a while now, and when you're at 160 feet, 9G is going to make more noise than, than anything else, really.
Anything more right now from the planning board before I open it up to the public? Hmm? Okay, um, there's one of...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. But how are we leaving this? Am I going to get a email from somebody saying, yeah, it's on? Or whatever you're going to do?
Do you need to confirm once again with Rhinebeck Equine that indeed this is going to happen at 1:30 on Wednesday? It's okay?
We've already okayed with, that with them at 1:30. We would want to actually confirm the number of people and make sure that they're okay with the quantity of people so that we were not disturbing the voices or the business.
Well, we know we have two people, Richard and Edna, and possibly Eric if he can make it, and one person from the neighbors' group.
So three or four.
To represent them. So there'd be four people, and Ray Jerkowski.
Yep.
If he can do it, are, because otherwise, we're probably not going to have anyone there who's qualified.
Ray's critical.
I know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I'd sent him an email as well to extend the invitation.
Because if he can't make it, then we're not going to have someone who can actually document the actual sound levels.
Understood.
I mean, it's still helpful, I think, for people to hear it, but it's not, obviously, it's not going to suffice to demonstrate that the noise is at a certain level, below a certain level, or whatever.
Understood.
So, but I will see if Ray can make it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Edna's question's still on the table.
Okay.
So I guess we will plan to meet you, is that correct?
Yes.
At the front door?
Yes.
Of this place, at 1:30?
Yep.
All right. Very good.
Unless they hear otherwise.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And thanks, you guys.
I'll, I'll send out a confirmation email as well, just to let everyone know a day or two before that we're still on.
Okay. Very good. Members of the public, anyone who wishes to say something this evening? We're going to be continuing the public hearing, obviously.
Until after the...
Right. Yeah, this is, yeah, it's something I think that we need to know. First of all, Jeff, what I'm going to be doing is I've called, I've spoken with a bunch of different consultants to get some ideas of prices and things like that. Typically, obviously, and you probably know how this works as well, the applicant actually contracts with the different consultants to do the different studies that are needed, then they submit it to the planning board. It's paid through escrow, but then you do it. One reason I think that might help in this case is the number of the proposals haven't come back yet in a form that the planning board could approve anyway. And we aren't going to meet again until the 20th of November. So by you taking this on, do, and I have a copy of, you know, the thing from October 2nd, which was the list of information, we need the noise study, the visual study, archaeology, and the visual analysis. By you doing that, you can get right on it and get people right in there. There are people that we've mentioned in here that we know can do the work, but you may choose someone different. Ideally, then, the information you provide us with at our meeting on the 20th, assuming this can get done expeditiously, will give us a chance to review that information, those studies from those people, and I think that that will help to move this process along. Otherwise, we're going to have to wait till the 20th to approve some of the different studies that would need to be done because we don't have all the information that the planning board would need to do that tonight. We haven't received everything, and you're not under that same burden. I hope that makes sense. And I have a list, I have a copy of our workshop minutes from the, from the second, so you have it right here. Yes?
Amanda Miller, 329 Wertenberg Road, your favorite neighbor. If you could pass this down, I have a topic for you guys. Just in regards to what Nate just said, I do think you guys owe it to us neighbors who have to live next to this thing, if you approve it, to do an appropriate noise-sound study, and it sounds like that's what you intend to do. And it sounds like there's seven there, there's going to be 13 at the plant on Wertenberg Road. And I would also just note that when this first all started, I did ask Jeff if I could see one to hear it for myself, and he told me no. He said they're all on private property, you can't see them. And now it seems at this late hour, all of a sudden now, there's one at the equine. I don't know where that is, but, and with all due respect, Woody, I could hear the fan from where I was sitting. All right, so the petition, I just wanted to update everyone again on our petition. To date, 107 people have signed in opposition to the proposed solar power plant, including 35 Wertenberg Road resident landowners. Let me say that a different way. At least 107 people intimately familiar in one way or another with Wertenberg Road believe that this power plant would adversely affect the neighborhood, including the rural scenic and historic character of the neighborhood, and would otherwise adversely affect adjacent lands, including by impairing the value and discouraging appropriate development and use of such lands. It is beyond doubt that this application should be denied. We have submitted unrebutted evidence of economic impact. And just recently, George and Rosemary Amon have written you all an email, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. This provides further unrebutted evidence of significant adverse impact and impairment of nearby home values. George and Rosemary wrote, quote, "As recent former residents of Rhinebeck, we have watched with dismay the handling of the proposal for a solar electricity farm on Wertenberg Road. The apparent lack of transparency and what has the appearance of collusion between various members of the planning board in Rhinebeck town officials has severely shaken our desire to ever again purchase a house in the town of Rhinebeck. Having recently sold a house on Primrose Hill Road and presently looking for a new home, we decided that we cannot trust the elected officials of Rhinebeck to safeguard our community. Hence, we are presently looking for a house in the town of Clinton." So what I just handed you came from St. Paul's Church website. You guys, at the last workshop, you wanted to know about the activities and the school things at the church. So there is service twice per week, every Saturday at 5:00 PM, every Sunday at 10:00 AM. There is Sunday School for Kids, age kindergarten to fifth grade, every Sunday at 10:00 AM. Since 1996, Pastor Mark has held Ziganfuss University, an adult Bible study and discussion group, every Monday night at 7:00 PM. I know what you're thinking, what does Ziganfuss mean? It's German for goat foot. And Ziganfuss University is named in honor of the Reverend Henry Lafayette Ziganfuss, who died in 1894, is buried in the Rhinebeck Cemetery and was first archdeacon of Duchess County. You can read more about him, including his time being held captive by Confederate soldiers in Pastor Mark's book at page 105 to 106, which I dropped off for you all. There are monthly council meetings, the third Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM. Every Wednesday night at 7:15 PM, there's a prayer-study group that meets. Every Monday and Thursday night from 8:00 to 9:00 PM, there are AA meetings. Every year, the church hosts the annual Wertenberg Turkey Supper. This year will be the 156 Turkey Supper. It began in 1859 and has been held every year except 1918 and one year during the Second World War due to the difficulty of obtaining turkeys. In 1934, Alva G. Frost wrote that this annual event has been widely known, and during all these years, it has been a great homecoming event for the community and for former residents. And every year, I'm told, tickets sell out, and I think this year, they're on pace to sell out again. I'm told the 7 o'clock seating has been sold out, and there are 39 tickets left for the 5:30 seating. So... Maybe pass this guy down. Thank you. There you go, Nate. So in doing some research, I came across a website called Rural Rhinebeck Neighbors, which seems to have been started in opposition to the recent mining expansion issue for the town face. As I started reading it, I couldn't help but feel that many of the points raised by Rural Rhinebeck apply to the Hudson Solar Barry Sherrod application as well. Rural Rhinebeck stated the mining at issue would be a detriment to the town's status and future growth. Specifically, the website states that it will degrade the rural appeal of our community, cause a precipitous drop in property values and tax assessment, change the quality of life to nearby residents, result in bad publicity for the town, and create a pond that would have no value to residents. The website goes on to state, "For you, this means increased tax burden to all residents due to decreased property values and increased town expenses, diminished perception of Rhinebeck as a Duchess County destination area, mining expansion goes against the town's own comprehensive plan." All of these statements apply to the Hudson Solar Barry Sherrod application. This solar power plant will be a detriment to the town's status and future growth. It will degrade the rural appeal of our community, cause a precipitous drop in property values and tax assessment, change the quality of life to nearby residents, and create a power plant that potentially has no value to residents. Let us not forget that you do not need to live in Rhinebeck to buy into this plant. You can live anywhere as long as you're connected to Central Hudson's grid. That means that although some Rhinebeck residents may initially buy into this power plant, they can sell their shares whenever they like, resulting in zero Rhinebeck residents owning panels in the power plant. This power plant has already resulted and will likely continue to result in bad publicity for the town. Next, "For you, this means increased tax burden to all residents due to decreased property values and increased town expenses." Indeed, just last week, Rosemary Amon, a parishioner of St. Paul's, told me that her and her husband were looking for a new home and were crossing Rhinebeck off their list, given what has occurred with respect to this power plant and this new law. She felt strongly that the town no longer cared about historic preservation. In prior meetings, we have all addressed how this power plant will significantly and adversely affect the value of our homes. Also, one thing at issue for this power plant that was not at issue with the mining is that the New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 487, states that any increase in assessed value due to the installation of a solar power plant is exempt from taxation for a period of 15 years. What this means is that since the local property tax levy is divided among all taxable parcels, all the property owners in town would see an increase to their property taxes to offset the tax-exempt solar power plant. This is why many towns in New York have voted to opt out of Section 487. Another reason why many towns have opted out is because unless there's a pilot program, which stands for payment in lieu of tax, or a property tax, local jurisdictions would not get any benefit out of the property. Finally, as I've stated at least twice, this proposed power plant, like the proposed mining expansion, goes against the town's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan specifically and explicitly lists 11 Wertenberg Road properties, including St. Paul's and one Frost Road property, and states that these 12 properties should be protected, should, quote, "be protected in new development near such sites, should be consistent with the existing setting of the site, taking into account the history, existing architecture and character of the surrounding area." The proposed power plant is new commercial and industrial development that is inconsistent with St. Paul's Church, the Pults Farmhouse, and the other 10 surrounding historic properties listed in the comprehensive plan. The proposed power plant also utterly fails to take into account and will adversely affect the history, existing architecture and character of the surrounding area. Rural Rhinebeck also discussed how environmentally sensitive that area was. For example, the area where the proposed mining was set to occur was a Blandings turtle conservation zone, contained wetlands, kettle ponds, and vernal pools, and had piloted woodpeckers and other birds. As we have already set forth in our letter to the planning board dated August 21st, according to Hudsonia, to the east of the proposed solar power plant is a stream running north to south, bordered by a small hardwood swamp. To the northeast, there are three intermittent woodland or vernal pools. The proposed solar power plant is also located in a 2,000-meter conservation zone, which contains two potential core wetlands for the Blandings turtle, and the proposed power plant appears to be within one-half mile of significant natural communities. The Blandings turtle is a mobile animal on New York State's list of threatened species. They use non-wetland unshaded habitats for nesting and also travel overland on migrations between wetlands. This 2,000-meter zone, the proposed solar power plant is sitting, could be used by Blandings turtles to nest and is likely an area where they would travel. In addition, this 2,000-meter zone could also be used by the spotted turtle, a New York State species of special concern for travel, resting or nesting. In addition, there are multiple piloted woodpeckers in my woods, just 500 feet from the Sherrod property. There are also Ralph T. Waterman Bird Club birdhouses all over St. Paul's Cemetery and Mr. Nemetz's property across the street from the church. Needless to say, the proposed power plant, like the proposed mine, is in an area with piloted woodpeckers and many other species of birds. At the last meeting, Jeff claimed that this will not be a permanent power plant and will be decommissioned after 25 years. I'm not sure if you all remember that. I then stood up and asked if I was going crazy, because at the first public hearing, I remember Jeff saying that the power plant was going to keep being recommissioned. It turns out, I'm not crazy. At around the one-hour mark of the August 21st, 2017 hearing, the following exchange occurred. Eric, you asked Jeff, quote, "You said that the plant will be decommissioned after 25 years. Is that mandatory that it be decommissioned?" Jeff responded, "No, no." There was a brief exchange, and then Eric, you asked, quote, "What do you envision the process be for recommissioning the plant if there's been no problems with it and everybody likes it?" Jeff answered, quote, "You just keep it operating. Just don't throw the switch. That will require the co-op that represents the neighbors and the landowner coming to an agreement 25 years out, an agreement 25 years out, which we think is going to happen in a lot of cases, but you know, we have to allow for the decommissioning as required by the law," close quote. Make no mistake, once you let a power plant into our neighborhood, it will be permanent, and at the very least, this property will forever be marred as a commercial industrial site and will never turn into a residence. I also wanted to go through several sections of the draft lease agreement submitted to the planning board, because I do not think this has been given any attention whatsoever. I tried to get a clean copy to pass out to you all, but was unable to get one, mine is handwriting all over it. So on the first page of the land lease agreement, there are several whereas clauses. The sixth whereas clause reads as follows, "Hudson Solar intends to form a new limited liability company, which will have Hudson Solar as its manager, and the customers who purchased and paid for solar panels of the CSA as its members to represent the common interests of the members, and to manage certain administrative and financial matters in connection with the ownership and operation of the panels included in the CSA." Section six of the agreement states in part that Hudson Solar shall have the right to assign or transfer its rights under this lease in whole or in part to the new LLC at any time, subject to the new LLC assuming all of Hudson Solar's obligations hereunder. This section touches on what some of us have already asked you all. What happens if Hudson Solar gets sold? This clause also begs the question of who the special permit should be issued to and who should be applying for it in the first place. Right to expand, Section 5B states in part that Hudson Solar shall have the right to alter, replace, expand, enhance, and upgrade the CSA within the site at any time during the term of this lease. This power plant is currently contemplated, appears to be subject to alteration, replacement, expansion, enhancement, and upgrades through its life, all at the expense of the surrounding landowners. For all we know, the members of this solar power plant are allowed to swap out their panels for newer technology in five or 10 years. Again, this business has no place on Whartonburg Road, and this application must be denied. Section 5E states in part that, quote, "Barry Sherrod shall not be entitled to payment of any additional amount for use of any easements or any electromagnetic visual view, light, noise, vibration, electrical, or other effects attributable to the easements or other aspects of the CSA." There you have it. According to Hudson Solar's own lease agreement, effects attributable to the power plant and the necessary easements include but are not limited to electromagnetic radiation and noise, as laid out in our letter to the planning board. Section seven states that by New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 487, the CSA is exempt from taxation for a period of 15 years to the extent of any increase in assessed value due to the CSA. Barry Sherrod shall cooperate with Hudson Solar and the new LLC in the protest of any tax assessment. It's my understanding that since Barry Sherrod has owned this property, he's received a 25.13% reduction in assessed value, whereas similar types of property have decreased in assessed value by 1.54%, but only after reduction in acreage. So this property already has artificially low taxes, and what this clause is saying is that Hudson Solar intends to fight any increase in the assessed value due to the power plant. Jeff also failed to mention this tax exemption at a prior meeting. The town has yet to decide whether it will opt out or do a payment in lieu of tax agreement. For those of you who are interested, you should email the town board and let them know you think solar power plants should pay their fair share of school and land taxes and share in the community's tax burden. Section eight states that Hudson Solar may, at its discretion, leave buried wire and conduit in place on the condition that all such buried wire be de-energized and disconnected from all power sources. This clause sort of speaks for itself, but that does not sound like returning the land to its original condition. Section 12 states that Barry Sherrod hereby warrants that he has no knowledge of any substance, chemical, or waste on the property. The property is defined as a 16-acre parcel that is identified as hazardous, toxic, or dangerous in any applicable federal, state, or local law regulation. I don't think Barry can warrant this. As I've said before, it's my understanding that he knows good and well that chemicals and substances have been dumped on that property. It's also my understanding that he wanted to keep that fact quiet. Another thing that should be noted is that this clause is just not concerned with hazardous materials having been dumped on the two acres that are being leased. It talks about hazardous materials on any portion of the 16-acre site. Section 17 states that Hudson Solar has a right of first refusal to purchase the leased property during the lease term and any extensions of fair market value. Again, if this application is approved, this property will never be residential, and neither the caroties or the innkeepers will ever be able to restore it as part of the old Pults Farm. Instead, this property is potentially a permanent hub of Hudson Solar. Section 18J states that this land lease agreement can be amended as long as such amendment is in writing. If this agreement can be amended, and the agreement is between Barry and Hudson Solar or potentially a new LLC, then anything the town is requiring must be attached to the special use permit. I know previously someone had said that perhaps some of the screening issues can be built into the lease. I don't think that should be done if those terms can just be amended by Barry and Hudson Solar at their sole discretion. Related to the lease issue, Section I-4 of the solar law states that a leased site created for the exclusive purpose of development of a solar power plant shall be exempt from the requirements for subdivision plat approval, provided a copy of the land agreement is submitted to the planning board as part of the application for special use permit. Hudson Solar has failed to provide a copy of the land agreement. All Hudson Solar provided is an unsigned lease agreement that has the word "draft" plastered on every page. Again, this application must be denied. At the very least, the applicant is required to seek subdivision plat approval as a result of this specific failure. How many more exceptions can the planning board make for this application? The planning board has already erroneously ruled that the applicant does not have to comply with Section 809 of the New York General Municipal law, resulting in a further abuse of the public trust. At some point, these favors to Jeff Irish and Hudson Solar that are contrary to the law and the public's interests must end. Although Jeff has basically refused to disclose the project costs to us, I happen to have found some information on this. If you go to NYSRDA's website, they have a link to a map so you can find a community solar project near you. If you click on that link and filter the projects so that you can see only those projects on Central Hudson's grid, you can find what appears to be the Sherrod Hudson Solar project. The map then allows you to download an Excel file, which I printed out for you all. As you can see, Hudson Solar has represented to New York State that this project will apparently cost approximately $1.2 million, and Hudson Solar is either asking for or has already received, it's unclear to me what the dollar sign incentive column means, approximately $122,000 in NYSRDA funding. And also, in case you're wondering, PON 3082 in column I is a New York Sun Commercial Industrial Incentive Program. As Jeff has previously explained, you do not need to live in Rhinebeck in order to buy into the Sherrod Hudson Solar Power Plant. All you need is to be on Central Hudson's grid. The flip side of that is true as well. If you live in Rhinebeck, you can currently take advantage of any one of the solar power plants currently being developed on Central Hudson's grid. Excluding the power plants, plural, that Hudson Solar is developing on Central Hudson's grid, all of which are in Rhinebeck, solar developers are seeking to install 344,019 panels worth of solar power plants on Central Hudson's grid that are outside of Rhinebeck. These projects are not fully subscribed. For example, I called NexAmp Inc., who is developing a solar power plant in Wappinger, New York, that is a purchase-type solar power plant, just like the Hudson Solar Sherrod plant, and they said their plan is not fully subscribed and they still have room left. In other words, Rhinebeck residents do not need to wait for this project, or any other project in Rhinebeck, to be started, because they can take advantage of the already completed solar power plants on Central Hudson's grid, such as the one in Kingston, as well as the plans currently being developed. Last time at this workshop, you guys mentioned something about the history of Whartonburg Road. I've dropped off for you a copy of Pastor Mark's book. I'd also refer you to our letter to the planning board dated August 21st, specifically pages three to seven, which goes through quite a bit of history. And I've also emailed you a number of historical sources today. In terms of the visual assessment, I think any visual assessment needs to take into consideration the views from the homes on Mountain View Road. I will try and send you a letter with more details on which homes can currently see this property.
Anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Dave Clipon. We own the, my wife and I own the Pults Farmhouse, 340 Whartonburg Road. I just had some comments, or unprepared. One is regarding the electrical impact. The, I just wanted to point out if, when, when everyone's out at the property or taking a look, that the line does come directly into our yard. It doesn't go along the road. We have power lines that go through the back of our yard and the Almeda's yard, which is also next door, David and Gloria Almeda. So, you know, of course, we don't want to have electrical lines in our backyard to begin with. If you can imagine, if you had a power plant next to your house and there were power lines coming through your yard, it's not a preference. So an additional burden to the network is not, also not preferred. So that's just one comment, something to consider, electrical impact. The density of the, of the solar panels, that was sort of brought up at the last meeting, that, you know, the zoning law is now minimizing the amount of acreage, but there's also the density of solar panels per space, that's a consideration. That's just something to bring up. The, the title, "Community Solar Plant," I just wanted to point out that it does imply that it serves the immediate community, but I think it's been pointed out that it's not necessarily doing that. It could be anywhere, it could be placed anywhere for the benefit of the community. I think that is a bit opposite of the intent of the comprehensive plan. That's another consideration. And I think that we also had a concern about additional usage, that, for example, and this is a question maybe for Ron Evangelista, that, that although it may be one or two acres used for solar panels, could there be other usage, usage on, on the property? So we have a question about that. That might be something that can be spoken to or commented on. And last, I think the, the goal of the, I think, we're certainly not questioning the goal of a solar, a solar plant. Many people have spoken in, in, you know, in support of that, and that's, that's true. It's, the discussion here is really about the location. I just want to reinforce that again. And that's business. And I do appreciate, Jeff has spoken to us in the past. He came to us directly and spoke to us about electrical impact. It might be worth bringing up to the public to hear what he had said about that, if that was important and it was very well considered, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
In terms of density, are you suggesting that it might be better to have the panel, the same number of panels on twice the acreage, for instance?
I think it's just a matter of considering the amount of material that's, that's being put in the location, that, just because, I think that the, it's assumed that a smaller acreage might mean less material. In other words, if there's, there's, the zoning is, the zoning is sized for a smaller amount of, amount of panels, that there would be less material. For example, four acres, there may be a greater spacing, less material. Two acres may be, maybe less, there may be less acreage, but there may be more panels packed into that space.
And, and do you suggest that there's a problem with the more panels?
Yes, in terms of material, that's, that's just, that's just a, you know, an issue of content, more to support, more to remove, et cetera. That's not, I'm not saying that's a major problem, but it's something for consideration.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
I want to compliment the amount of research that was done in opposition to this project. I'm Rhinebeck Town historian Nancy Kelly. I have not done that great amount of research, but I do know the history of the road and the properties that join it. I thought that Rhinebeck was in favor of green energy. I thought that we had worked hard to come up with a solar energy law that would be workable for the town. And this property that they have chosen is not on, it's contiguous to historic property, but it is not on the properties that have been designated as historic. The idea that it is not directly facing the road, and the idea that it is much less intensive than other uses that, to which the property could be put, which would generate more noise and would generate more traffic, and all of the objections that are being made to the, to the solar plant, surprised me. I was in contact with my daughter, who is on the planning department for Montgomery County in Maryland, and she sent me some recent activity down there in regard to spilt solar arrays in connection with historic properties. And they have been allowing that kind of thing with certain restrictions, and I think that Rhinebeck should consider not going ballistic about this.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Can I ask a question of?
Yes.
Amanda, you mentioned two things, Blandings Turtle and billiard woodpecker. Are you suggesting that this project, as is presently comprised, is threatening to those two species?
So I have not been on the property ever, but what I'm saying is, when I spoke to Hudsonia, what I said is that there's potentially, it's in a conservation zone of Blandings Turtles, they're potentially on there. There are wetlands, according to maps, whether you want partial access, you go in Hudsonia's maps, there are wetlands on the property, there are, so what I'm saying is, I am 500 feet from the property, and I have all of these different kinds of critters, have a community living on my end. And so the fact that they're not present 500 feet away, to me, doesn't make any sense. And also, there could be Blandings Turtles and all of those things. And the point is, is that if all of these other issues were important enough to stop the mining expansion, it should be important enough to stop the power plant. And with all due respect to Nancy Kelly, we're not going ballistic. We have to live next to this thing. We bought our homes without a power plant next to them. This is not what we want. And what we came here for, regardless of, even if you assume the law was passed appropriately, we're not going ballistic. We have every right to protect the value of our homes. I mean, Jaclyn's own Realtor wouldn't even tell her about this. You have someone emailing you guys, telling you, "They're not going for a house in Rhinebeck." You have a letter from, a Realtor from Phil, saying that it will adversely affect the value of adjacent surrounding homes. So I don't, I don't appreciate the ballistic comment, even though I do have a great amount of respect for Ms. Kelly.
Now, I would just ask specifically about those two species and how you thought this project could possibly detrimentally affect those two species.
So I'm not going to pretend to be a Blandings Turtle expert. I imagine if you clear-cut two acres, I imagine if you could clear-cut a Blandings Turtle. The noise, I, in my letter to you all dated August 21st, I cited sources on the effect of certain decibels on wildlife, and so to the extent it could impact flight patterns, if they want to even live there, like meeting things, it's all in the letter. So, I mean, that's all, that's all I can point out to you. I can't become an expert in all of these areas and several things.
All right, thank you.
That's one of the reasons we're requiring a habitat study of the site to ascertain what is there, what the impact might be in terms of the habitat functioning for the critters that might be there, are there, whatever.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Murray. I'm the landowner at 361 Whartonburg Road, an adjacent property to the proposed solar power plant. Just a couple points. From the workshop, I attended the workshop two weeks ago, and when you were talking about the reviews and talking about like the environmental review, I forget what section it was under, but the part with the ground and whether, where the ground was going to be, just like dug up, or where there was going to be an effect on the ground. I think that you failed to talk about the trenching that had to take place, and I'm pretty sure that trenching has to take place outside, or some of it has to take for the electrical trenches. I know at the September 18th Planning Board meeting, Jeff showed us a drawing, and it was a drawing that he had submitted that day to State Parks and Historic Preservation. I think it first went to the planning board, and because they were concerned about this. So I don't think, you mentioned the electrical trenches taking place outside of the site, but on the property. So I'm hoping that that will be considered during the environmental review. Also, there was also a question that Jeff answered, because State Parks and Historic Preservation had wondered if there were going to be any other permanent facilities on the property, he said. And he had just mentioned the six-by-six-foot transformer pad, but I'm just wondering if they were I'm just wondering if they were asking for on the property being the entire parcel or the site, so I just wanted to make sure that that question was answered correctly. I also had some question about, we talked about noise a little bit, I know you're talking about the noise from the inverters and the transformers, I was also wondering if there was any possible way to test whether or not there'd be any electrical interference going on, because that's something that, after doing a lot of research online, it seemed like a lot of the noise, it wasn't just the fans, it was interference, so where it's feeding into the power lines, if the power lines, I know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know the exact, but if they don't have, like, if something isn't lining up electrically, like, they can create a frequency, and so is that going to be tested for, because that's also a concern of mine, because it seems like that's where a lot of the problems actually happen, it might not be the muffin fan sound, but it's an actual interference and a frequency. And I guess that that's it right now, that's it for now.
Thank you, that's a good question, and we can certainly refer to our engineer. Sort of like when you're driving down 308, and you're trying to listen to the local radio station, and you get the traffic light, and all of a sudden you get a lot of static. But, so it's definitely a question that we can have our engineer look into, I think you're talking about bleeding from lines, you're talking about frequencies which might interfere with television, with radio, with.
Yeah, I'm just like, power lines, you know, making like a humming noise because something's going off, you know, how is that going to be tested for? I just, I know that a lot of times, when solar power plants are making noise, it's not necessarily the generator, it's not necessarily the humming that's really loud, it's like the interference, clicking noises, you know, high pitched frequencies, and so I'm pretty concerned about that.
But, that's something we can certainly ask, have our engineer look into, something of question that certainly can, I'm sure there's information out there on this that we can have reviewed.
Will he be looking at, I mean, Central Hudson's going to change things, obviously, at the pole, there'll be a transformer there? I mean, I think everyone's seen transformers blow, and they hum, and the red light goes on, and eventually they get around to fixing it, but I think that's what she's talking about, extra noise, too, just the mechanics of this whole transfer process.
We'll ask him to look into that. Anyone else tonight? Okay, what I'd like to do, before we close the public hearing, Hartz has a suggestion of how we might proceed from here, and I'd sort of like him just to explain it to both our members of the board, as well as to the public, to sort of see where we're going to go from here. So, Art, if you'll.
My suggestion on how the board proceeds from here is more than a suggestion, it's the basis of 40 years of experience in dealing with SEER, and how the board has to perform at this point in the process. While I was not able to attend, the board had a work session on October 2nd. At that time, the board specifically identified at least 10 areas within which additional information is required of the applicant. As required under SEER, the board has the opportunity, the responsibility, to identify additional information that it believes to be required before the board can move forward on completion of an EAF Part II, and/or, and possibly the EAF Part III, which certainly I think will apply in this particular case. That additional information, which is substantial, has to be provided by the applicant to the board, reviewed as to its sufficiency by the board, and considered in completion of the EAF Part II and the Part III. Only when that is done, can the board issue a determination of significance. Until the board either issues a negative declaration, being a determination of non-significance, or both issues a positive declaration, a determination of significance, meaning that there are impacts that need further evaluation, including consideration of mitigation measures, alternatives, et cetera, and the board follows the positive declaration with the acceptance of a draft environmental impact statement. Until either one of those two actions occur, a NECDAC or a POSDEC followed by an EIS, the application is technically incomplete, which means that any further consideration by this board, other than, except as related to the administration of the SEER compliance process, which is some of the things you've been talking about this evening, any further consideration is basically unwarranted. This evening, in that this public hearing had been continued to this particular date, I advise the chair and I advise the board, that the board, despite the fact of the occurrence of the October 2nd work session, and the additional information that had been identified as necessary, the board certainly should provide opportunity this evening for any additional public comment to be made, such as Amanda and others have made this evening. However, once that has been done, which it has been this evening, the Planning Board, I think at this point, simply needs to resolve to defer any further continuation of the public hearing to a time that will be set after either issuance of a NECDAC or acceptance of a draft environmental impact statement. That's essentially the SEER procedure. So there's, you know, that's the, that's the procedure, procedure to be followed, and clearly there are substantive, or substantial pieces of additional information that are requested, that have been requested by the Planning Board in its October 2nd workshop, and summarized in the notes. I think there have been some expanded or related issues raised here this evening that need to be considered, and frankly, and my take is, it's highly doubtful that the applicant is going to be anywhere near a position to provide all of this information by the next Planning Board meeting of November 20th, and even if the applicant does, the next step for the Planning Board would be to review that additional information, review the sufficiency of the information, and then proceed again in moving forward and looking at the part, the EAF Part II, the EAF Part III, and on moving on to the determination. Any questions from the board?
Basically, what it means is until we have that information, it can sit down and do Part II and look at Part III, there is no more new information that we can present that will be available to the public. Now, those documents will be available, whatever they might come out to be, it'll all be part of the public record, it'll all be available to anyone to come and take a look at, and the public hearing will be resumed, so that whatever information we do receive, whatever comes through, the public will have ample opportunity once again to comment. We're not going to rush this thing, we just feel that until we have this additional information, or in a position to analyze it, there's really nothing more we can share with you, there's really nothing more to say right now.
One thing I didn't mention, is the lack of a specific continuation hearing, does not preclude the opportunity for any one of you, or anyone else interested in this project, to submit written comments to the board.
Correct. So, Art, perhaps you would care to express this in a motion, so that I don't screw it up?
Well, I think you, I think you simply need to defer any continuation of the public hearing to a time to be set, following either issuance of a NECDAC or acceptance of a DEIS.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion from the board? Okay, in doing this, we are closing the public hearing tonight, subject to reopening it, once we're in a position to have completed the SEER process, so that we're actually able to present to the public once again the information we've received, and once again to invite public comment on that.
Also, one additional comment, because Amanda may make the comment, if the board proceeds, ultimately proceeds here to a DEIS, there is the opportunity, and it may not be the responsibility, I'm not sure if it's responsibility or opportunity, for the board to actually hold a public hearing on the EIS.
And we will do that, we will do that. No, we're not continuing, we're deferring, we're deferring the public hearing at a date to be announced, once we're in a position to reopen the public hearing, as opposed to continuing it, which would suggest that we have an actual date in mind.
You're not closing.
We're not closing it, no, we can't close it, we don't, we haven't completed SEER.
Closing it, the application's technically incomplete, therefore, therefore even if you were to incorrectly close, that would not begin a time clock, because the application was not complete.
So we won't do that incorrectly. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. So that's where we stand, we're still accepting, absolutely accepting public comment, as things come in to the office downstairs with Gretchen and everything, you're certainly always welcome to come and review whatever new things we do come in, I'm assuming it's not all going to come in at once, the information, it's going to come in from different groups, different consultants, things like that, as they can complete the work that is assigned to them. And once again, it'll all be in the public record, and you're all welcome to come and review that. Thank you. We have two more things on the agenda, we'll just sort of wait for people to leave, and then we, they're two procedural resolutions, they should get you out in time for the baseball game.
Gretchen, I inappropriately put it on the agenda as continuation, it was not scheduled as continuation till tonight.
Maybe get those ones up to the town board.
And all the stuff that she gave you?
Yeah.
Can I have your copies?
Yes.
So I can put it in the files and design the document?
Oh. Don't you like that turtle? Paula chose that.
I took a bunch of pictures of turtles of the superstore.
Did you take that?
It's up in Ontario, Canada, landings turtles up there. Okay, if people wish to have further conversations, if you could sort of take it outside, because we do have two more things we have to do.
You're next.
But if, anyway, anyway, if you could take the disagreement outside, because we do have two more things on the agenda, we have to, I would think so.
Walt, Walt's next. Am I up?
What we're, what we're going to move right on to now, is Walt Horstman, 32 Cove Road, special use permit and site plan approval, sketch plan conference and initial presentation of applications for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning 12540, and site plan review and approval in the matter of construction of a 672 square foot detached garage and relocation of driveway on a single-family dwelling premise, 2.1 acre, at 32 Cove Road within the land conservation and water resource overlay districts. The town's WRA and Planning Board Review and Processing is made available under Town Code, Chapter 125, and SEER. Take it away.
Sure, so you have the materials that I sent, the five documents, I believe?
Yes.
Great. So we want to build a new freestanding garage on the non-Hudson River side of the property. This is a house that looks out over the Vanderburg Cove, and currently the driveway cuts between the house and the view of the river, just historically, that's how the house was built in 1971. The garage was underneath the house and has been since enclosed, so there is no garage. So consequently, all cars are parked in a parking area that is between the Hudson River and the house, and so what we'd like to do is build a new freestanding garage that would therefore not be seen by the river, or be completely out of the view of the river, close off the existing driveway, which is really just cut into the slope of the land, restore that to its original slope, take out the retaining walls, and basically bring in whatever materials are required to restore that, close off the garage, the driveway completely, by, and screening it with adding in additional Norway spruces and white pines that are currently on the edge of the driveway, and then bring in a new driveway that would be on the non-Hudson River side of the property as well, so it would be, and then follow the current grade of the land, the garage is currently positioned in as flat an area as possible, it's a very, it's a pretty steep grade, so we found one portion of land that's relatively flat to put the garage in, so we're not having to do a lot of retaining walls, or, you know, messing up the land. I did talk to the Highway Department today to check about moving the driveway, and the Highway Department thinks that it's fine, there's, it's currently adjacent to a driveway the other property, and so it actually has the same view lines as that driveway, and I'll be filing an application for that tomorrow.
Questions from members of the Planning Board?
Is there a drawing that shows how you want it to be? I have this survey map, which I guess is the existing situation.
Yeah, it is drawn on there, in the, I do know that I'm going to be talking to Marie Welsh to get a full-scale version of this, but if you see, there's a small drawing of it to, between the existing house and the property line of George and Gail Reek, that's the position of where the garage will be.
Will be, okay, thanks.
Correct. And then that, that kind of drawing there is where the intended driveway will be. So you see that existing driveway that says gravel area, that will then be closed off.
Okay, so then where will there be a parking area around this garage?
Two, so it's a two-car garage, there'll be, likely on the side, the edge of it, is, will be a place to be able to do a bit of a turnaround.
On the outside edge?
On the, the northern edge.
Closer to the property?
Close to the property line.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you know your setback restrictions on that boundary?
I believe the setback is 75 or 100 feet, so there will require a variance, and I've talked to Ron Evangelist about that, he believes that there's a, there's going to be a variance required for the setback to Gail and George's property line, and potentially a variance from the garage to the road. By the way, just to give some context, because on this diagram, George and Gail sort of have a, that's the property to the north, have, it's more of a flag lot, so their house is very positioned very far north on their property, and so their driveway runs along the northern edge of that property line, so their, the garage will probably not even be within the view from their house, it's not like their house is sitting right on the, right there where their, you know, their names are on this diagram.
You're not showing any grading on that side at all, are, I mean, surely you have to do something to flatten out, you've got about, what, five feet of slope there that you have?
Yeah, so the, the idea is that there would, there will be some light grading to put the driveway in there, and, but this is sort of in the area where there's actually the least amount of grade, and we'll do all the appropriate silting provisions to ensure that, one, for where we actually are doing the grading for the driveway, and then also when we restore, close off the existing driveway, and then, and then restore that with the original slope.
There is a topo in here.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
That's what I'm saying, it looks like about five feet of grading, and.
Yeah.
And that gravel area, then, is, you say you're going to restore that to its original slope?
Correct.
And plant that?
Correct, that'll be planted, so the trees will be along the area where the, where the road is, and then there's a retaining wall that runs for most of that driveway, remove the retaining wall, and then let the grade return to its original state, so it'll actually match the grade on the other side of the house. And then, just for, as a point of reference, where the, that, near the house there, where that, basically it's a parking area, the turnaround, that'll be turned into a stone terrace, that'll be much more attractive than a turnaround area.
Okay, I have a procedural resolution. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Walt Horstman for special use permit, and site plan review and approval in the matter of construction of a 672 square foot detached garage and relocation of a driveway in a single-family dwelling, 2.1 acre parcel at 32 Cove Road. One, endorses the sketch plan and conditional upon a zoning determination sign-off by the ZEO, accepts the applications and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the Planning Board, its advisors, and the public in the manner set forth below. Classifieds the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEER, schedules a combined public hearing on the applications for Monday, November 20th, 2017, at 6:40?
Mm-hmm.
6:40. And directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth with the Town Code Chapter 125. zoning. I want to check with Gretchen and she'll tell you what to do for that.
Okay.
Delegates Planning Board members, who would like to go on a site visit?
I'll take it.
Woody and Edna?
Me.
Oh, you piped up before I got my glasses on. I couldn't tell who was talking.
Yes, you can call my cell phone. It's in the documents.
Okay.
Okay. Delegates Planning Board members, Woody and Edna, to conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of the public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board reverse the applications to the town CAV for review and written comment concerning environmental factors with response required within 30 calendar days of this resolution. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118, Waterfront Advisory Committee refers the application to the town WAC for review and written comment concerning consistency with coastal policies with response required within 30 calendar days of this resolution. Six, authorizes the town planning consultant without prejudice to any...
To the CEO's determination or any...
Or any information or comment, thank you, that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of both the above cited field visit and referral to prepare working drafts of an EAF Part II and both Seeker and approval resolutions for the planning board's consideration on November 20th, 2017, as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Talk to Gretchen and she'll let you know what needs to be done to further you along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least.
I was going to say, I have ten minutes.
No, 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 no. We always save the best for last.
Unbelievably, I've forgotten something that I wanted to bring. But you've got all my materials, I think. I want to put in a picket fence so my dogs don't get smushed in the road. I wanted to change an existing exterior door that goes onto an outside deck to a sliding or a French door, and I didn't have the French door specs in that. I actually have them in my car, which is right there, if you want me to get them.
No, you don't need to have them tonight. That's good.
And then a story window in the living room.
Okay.
That faces nowhere where it's...
Questions?
Is this the house next to the library?
Across from the library. Dark, dark gray, Darth Vader gray.
Across the street?
Yep.
Okay.
You're replacing the door with something the same size? Or is it 6053?
It's probably a little bit bigger, but not considerably. The other is like an old exterior door, so.
Is it two units though, or is it just one that's on their nose?
It's one that's on their nose.
This is after.
Okay, any other questions?
Trying to get a little light in the house. A little dingy for you?
Living a little bit, yeah.
I like the before and after. It's very helpful.
Oh, good. Thank you. Well, I didn't do it my architect, but I will relay the comments.
Okay, I have a draft resolution. The Town of Randwick Planning Board hereby access follows on the applications, Margaret Doherty for a special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and site plan review and approval in the matter of installation of a front yard picket fence, clear story window, and sliding glass door or French door. French door. Yeah, the French door looked very nice. On a single family residence...
Do we get to vote?
I'm sorry?
Do we get to vote? I like the French door.
I would love to hear your opinions on the French door.
I'd go French door. I think it'll seal better.
I think French is easier because I feel sliding, you're kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
I have the panel specs, but...
And now, that they seal, they tend to seal better too. On a single family premise...
Yes, for, excuse me?
2.13 acre at 75 Kelly Street within the Ryan Cliff hamlet, Ryan Cliff overlay, Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, and the town's LWRA. One endorses the sketch plan and conditional upon zoning determination sign-off by the CEO, accepts the applications and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public in the manner set below, manners set below. We classified as a type 2 action under Seeker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling the public hearing for November 20th at 6:45. And directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof. So I want to talk to Gretchen about that. Who wants to go to take a look at this?
I'll go.
Eric? I'll go with you.
All right.
Excellent.
And I will do my best to remember to, to do the site visit. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board refers the applications to the town CAV for review and written comment concerning environmental factors with response required within 30 calendar days of this resolution. In accordance with the Town Code Chapter 118, Waterfront Advisory Committee refers the applications to the town WAC for review and written comment concerning consistency with coastal policies with response required within 30 calendar days. Refers the application to the town historian for review and comment if any. Authorizes the town planning consultant without prejudice to any information...
To the CEO's determination or...
Or comment that may be, thank you, presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of both the above cited field visit and referral to prepare working drafts of an approval resolution for the planning board's consideration on November 20th, 2017, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Gee, I think we got to the end of the agenda.
Can I make a motion?
Well, actually, Woody has to do that because there's tradition and we do, we're an old town. We try to be traditional.
Longstanding tradition.
No, I don't know.
Of course, he's crotchety tonight.
If he's going to waffle on the issue, let him get back to you.
Right.
Motion's denied.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.